There's gonna be more lights.
More landscaping, there's gonna be more issues.
And you, you handle all of that?
No, and like I mentioned when we started this whole conversation is that over the next five years or ten years, we're going to be adding more people. I don't know what that number is, I don't know if we are or aren't. You might, you guys just handling work orders.
But you wouldn't need a full-time person to handle lighting and landscaping.
Not necessarily.
That's, that's a couple hours a month, isn't it?
Well, and all the time.
Just roll that in, just roll that in your compliance officers.
So now we're talking about people, so places, let's talk about places.
Well, it's people and places because a person has to have a place.
I understand.
So if an operator can be out floating around in the world, and we have an operator's office, so they can come back and they do whatever minimal office work, and then they're off in the world again.
Right. Right.
If you have somebody in management like me, like, let's say, you know, one of our potential actions in this community is to bring recycled water to different parts of the community. And either we do that through pipelines, through all town, or we do that through little package plants at each one of these large developments. If that's the case, and we end up with four or five of those, then you're most likely gonna end up with a sewer, uh, wastewater manager. So you have your operators, and you have somebody managing them operate those plants. So then that person's gonna have to have some sort of permanent office space. So that's, that's where I was getting at with this whole thing in the beginning, is if we go, we go this route, we build it out, and say in five years, we go, you know what, this, we have enough money now, and there's space, we're gonna build down here. We build down here, build a better, more community-friendly environment, than most of those other spaces would eventually be used up by future employees. I, I totally understand the need or the desire not to have the traffic down there, I'm totally for that, I'm totally for it.
Think, think about how far we've gone in twenty years. Nowhere. This building was built twenty years ago, we've gone nowhere from here. We're just now starting because we have to, right?
Well.
We're, we're, we're forced to the, to the wall to build a facility. So that's what we're gonna do. And I get that.
So, so look at this twenty years, for the last eight years, Rob and I have shared an office.
I understand.
And every time he needs to talk to somebody personally on one-on-one, either he has to go somewhere or I have to go somewhere. Every time I'd have to do the same thing, either he goes somewhere or I have to go somewhere. Right now, we basically boot Paula out of her office to use that as a meeting room if they need to have some sort of confidential conversation.
Or lock yourself in a fire truck.
Or lock yourself in a fire truck. But only if you're on the.
I agree.
I get it, I get it.
It's a good old time.
So it's not a matter of, we haven't gone anywhere, it's, we haven't had the vision or the ability to go.
Well, the, the other thing also is the fact that how long had that old punch list, was the new admin building there for?
It's been on there since I've been here, and that's been almost fourteen years, so.
Yeah.
Well, that's active being reactionary or proactive or reactive. And if we just keep reacting to our needs, we're gonna just fulfill our needs, and that's gonna change. Like you said, they're talking about developing cemetery, the airport, the, up on the terrace, up on the hives. So that's gonna bring a big impact.
I have a question, uh, and, and maybe Mr. Young can answer this question.
I hope so.
The proposed project that's going in off of air, at the airport site, I heard of, you, do you know anything about that project? Is it true that they're looking at putting in a commu- community facilities building there, or a community center building?
See, the best plan also, I don't believe they're putting in a community facilities building, they're looking at doing a commercial multifamily, which is their four-to-one housing component, and then residential, it's open space, and then that's what Kelly was talking about, a piece of property that they may have a package plant, and he would know more about that than I do.
Is there any way that maybe one of those buildings could actually be for the district admin? Sorry, then we just deal, you know, it's done with, then we have our own building for admin, it's not the same?
We haven't seen intended track maps yet, but certainly requests we can make, I, you know.
You know, I mean.
Anything's possible, we could always ask, but I think that's gonna be, you know, one of those, one of those major breaks for them, because doing any kind of development now is always on a shoestring, and it's gotta pencil out, or they're not gonna do it.
Right.
And they're willing to bring water across the bridge without even blinking their eye. And that's, that was huge. I'm sorry, sewer, that's our sewage, not water.
That water was only a press.
Yeah, no, you're under a sewer across the bridge. I gotta stay on my wheelhouse.
So, they are, that, that development is, I mean, they are very interested in doing what's gonna be best for the community. I'm not sure if they have yet, but they said they were gonna go to the advisory council and talk to them about it. They've already talked to the county and the counties in favor of what they were presenting. So it is possible to have an administrative building over there, if they were willing to provide the land. There, if that was the case, then the district would have to either outright buy the land, or use in lieu of fees and basically water and sewer, we'll be buying the land for it.
And then put the bill for the construction.
And then you have to build the building.
I thought they were gonna build the building.
Well, and nothing is set in stone right now, they've.
We don't wanna be renters though.
We don't wanna be renters, no, but.
So, so it is possible, I mean, anything is really possible.
Sure.
That's not a great place to go though, I mean, you're down Indian Valley Road and.
So now you're bringing people across the bridge, so now people who walk here would have to basically walk across the bridge. So I mean, everywhere you go, you have a problem unless you stay down.
I'm, I'm on call for my work, my plant's down, it looks like I gotta, I gotta get on the road, out to my plant. Are we going to?
Wanna give us a final word, what your opinion is? I mean, what we're pretty much styling on is public access.
There's, yeah, I think we need to study, I, I would like to see outreach to the neighbors that are at minimum, the ones who share a fence line with the, the plant now, and say, hey, what do you think? And then probably all of the road down to, to river. And just say, this is what we're thinking with them. And even tell them pros and cons, I mean, you know.
Well, they, not the whole job, but the other option, and it's not, I don't know that it's entirely possible at this point. The other option is to use our, our easement access as our permanent access. It would have to go through the railroad, the railroad would have to approve it, it would have to be improved to paved. It would have to be paved, it would have to be improved to a standard for commercial traffic, because it is all saved for.
Can't afford that.
Yeah, well, it's direct return, it's just, are you paying it every?
Hey, I know, but we only eliminated a bathroom and a conference room, you can't build, pave a road with that.
Yeah, they made a conference room yet.
Well, whatever it comes. What I'm referring to is the whole.
I thought all you needed was one anymore.
Right.
You know?
I think, I think it's, it has to do with the square footage, and how many people you have in this space is gonna trigger the second bathroom, for the conference room area, so when you're, when you're up to eight hundred, eight hundred ninety-six square feet, you're gonna need to have two, and they could both be two unisex, they don't have to be male, female anymore. You could have three, one of each, whatever.
I think, I think that what this is could be a potential component, if we need to tweak the design a little bit, you know, maybe that needs to be done, but I think that that area would be easily repurposed into something in the future when we do continue to grow. That's what I think, I think we need to give direction to these guys to move in a, you know, if we need to.
Just opportunity a little. Real quick, I'm taking your time, but all that, see the, the way I, I view that plant is that brown area, that's the underneath covered area. So you have the potential to expand that at a future date, and turn that storage into office and relocate the equipment to another yard. So the, this potential is there to expand that building, it's built into it.
A hundred years from now.
Say it's built into it.
Sorry, your service sir.
Oh, thank you.
Unfortunately, the rate that, that community growth is, this community is probably gonna hit six thousand in the next five to ten years, and then probably ten thousand in twenty years or more, if we keep the same growth.
Yeah, but we're, we're being told this plant's gonna be usable for thirty years plus, right?
The hope is that it lasts in excess of thirty years.
My bet is it'll last twenty at most, if the percent growth rate continues.
What's your opinion of public access? I just didn't get past one item.
Well, I have, the question is, would Gallo be willing to pay for, pay to pave that other road, so that, I mean, the other property isn't landlocked?
So, Gallo, not Gallo, but their, uh, G, G three logistics, their, their transportation contractor has approached me several times in wanting to discuss improving the access for their purposes. I don't know that they're willing to go all the way to paving, but they may be willing to put some of it in order to improve the road between N Street or the corner of N Sixteenth to the edge of our easement.
Right.
I know, then you've gotta build a road along the edge of that sewer pond, and then you need another fence to block off that sewer pond.
Well, essentially, if, if that was the case, and we were gonna say, okay, we're gonna use that as our access, then instead of getting rid of the first pond, we would get rid of the second one.
I see.
Remove the building up.
Which may actually be a smart idea.
I love that idea.
Because they were deep.
The problem now is the, the cost of building a road is huge.
Yes.
It's huge.
And prevailing wage rate, yes.
The question I also have is that the property is landlocked, what is their long-term plan? Is we really gonna make it as grapes and wine for the next fifty years? Cause I know it's in their own plan for housing.
You're talking about Gallo's property?
Yeah.
The twenty-four.
And as far as I understand, the square, the square plus, as far as I understand, it's, you know, it may be slated by the county for housing, and there is no access for it for housing.
Right, and that's why.
They would have to go through the railroad property, then our property, then the railroad property again, and then, then they would be in their own property.
So they couldn't run where you're proposing existing road right now?
Well, that existing road is on our property.
I know.
But in order to put houses back there, I'm sure that our fire prevention would want a forty-foot wide road, and that's gonna be huge dollars.
And right now, what do you need, twelve, twenty minutes?
Minimum twenty-six, right?
We would need at least twenty, probably twenty-six, just to provide access.
Yeah, but does it all, doesn't all have to be paved?
Well, the problem is, you're going behind houses, so now you have to, number one, mitigate the noise, then you have to mitigate the dust. So if you're gonna have regular access there, then you would have to mitigate the dust, so a dirt road or a gravel road would still provide dust, or put up dust in the summer.
Right.
And that would be an effect on those houses.
So, so what I'm saying is, you need a twenty-four foot easement, but you don't need twenty-four feet of pavement. When parts go back there, they're gonna drive on the pavement.
So, we would need a minimum of twenty-foot wide road. We have an easement through that whole parcel, so anywhere on that parcel, we can drive.
Yeah, I guess I'm not posing my quote, my statement correctly.
You see, you could put a six-foot strip on a forty-foot easement and call it access.
Well, not six foot, but you could put a twelve-foot strip on a twenty-six foot easement.
You have to have two lanes of traffic.
It's two-way traffic. For a driveway?
Once you start putting house back.
Once you, when you go put houses back there, now it's, it's on the developer.
For driveway, you would be, you'd need twenty foot.
And it's over fifty feet long, so you gotta have.
It's a driveway, it's not a road.
It's a private.
So you build a house, it's a driveway.
It's a private access, is what it would end up being, so it would have to be a twenty-foot road. If you have a secondary access and we could call it driveway, you can neck it down to fourteen.
Well, okay, but let's say Oak Drive came up with the money to put a twelve-foot page strip down the middle of the road.
Go for it.
It's still fi- it's still fire accessible.
Oh yeah, sure. So, so if we were using that for access for the CSD, then we would, we would want a minimum of twenty-foot wide road, because you're gonna have two-way traffic.
Okay.
So you wouldn't want somebody to have to drive off the road, and then come back on the road.
That would be a whole public works decision to them whether they're gonna allow it.
Right.
Right, but I think that.
Look into it.
I, I think that would be something really good to look into partnering on that cost, because then, A, we don't have to worry about spending the money on the trouble pond and all the other problems.
Well, the problem is, is we're slow.
We're gonna do it, and it's common.
Public access without the road.
Without the road, as in like the original thing that's. I, I think they, I think Stephanie's gonna talk, maybe homeowners association, and I just. The only thing I think I'm just a little bit concerned is making sure that people are safe dropping at the E ways, uh, location, and not driving into the sewer pond, or going for a swim like back in the old days.
Any, any public, any space available to the public would be blocked from the rest of the park.
One of my concerns is, every little thing that we can trim off of this saves the district money. That's, that's, that's my second concern, it's not my first concern, it's my second concern. Cause I can see a need for, for all of this at some point in time, and, and I wouldn't wanna deny that we built this facility and didn't build it enough to facilitate the needs in the future, I get that. But it doesn't mean that we have to have self-flushing toilets and, you know, all the, you know, all the.
Heated toilet seats.
Huh?
Heated toilet seats.
Well, yeah, you know what I'm saying, it doesn't need to have all the bells and whistles. And when you allow the public access, now you've gotta add more internal fencing. So if you eliminated the public access, then you're eliminating the cost of fencing. It's just the little things that if we can, if we can mitigate those things, we can come up with, with a, maybe a perfect deal, you know?
So, so we can basically eliminate public access, that's, you know, that is an option.
Well, we have to figure out how though.
The.
We have to have a plan.
The issue becomes, so this is an option for administrative offices to be removed from the fire department. So what, what do you want us to bring back as other options?
We still have need for a meeting space for these meetings, we still have.
For these meetings?
Yeah, we still have.
Okay, if you eliminate public access, then you can't have them pay the bills down there either.
That's, that's exactly what I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah, but, but it, why do you wanna have the offices there if people can't access them?
Well, because the bookkeeper doesn't need to have interaction with, with the public.
Sure she does, but when the other accountant comes, that's public, that's not.
Well, that's not thirty people a day, or thirty people in one day driving down to pay their bills.
Well, I think if you.
It's not, it's not six point four people, it's one.
But I think Kelly is, um, observant enough about safety things, that he's not going to build something that doesn't provide for blockage so that, uh, the person just showing up on the site can't get in trouble down there. Uh, can't get into the sewer ponds, or into their equipment, or into any part that they shouldn't be in.
Well, we'd have to, we'd have, if we allow public access, then we have to add additional fencing to, to prevent that.
So basically, it, it's gonna come down to what, what offices you would be willing to have down there. If you're not willing to have payments down there, then basically, the accounts manager and the billing clerk would be somewhere else. If you don't wanna have meetings down there, then, then the meeting room would obviously not be down there, you wouldn't have to account for that.
I'll be honest with you, if we eliminated accepting cash and kept the payment box here, I see problems solved.
Yeah, and, and adding ACH.
And that's simple, no public access, you pay your bill in that box right there, we don't take cash.
Where do you have your meetings?
So where do we have meetings?
Okay, I, I don't know, we've been doing it here for twenty years, and we've had probably four meetings, and we couldn't facilitate the number of people.
Well, we're talking about once they leave, we're gonna repurpose it, we can't.
Repurpose your space.
Well, you, you have the space, but now you're gonna invite the public down there for that.
Right, what I'm saying is, if they repurpose a space, this space won't exist for our needs.
Okay, you don't need to repurpose this space until you're ready to have people living here. When are we gonna do that?
I don't know.
Well, we've talked about it for twenty years, when are we gonna do it?
Well, until they move out.
Oh, come on, really? We can afford to have people living here?
Well.
You're talking about.
You wanna be reactive or you wanna be proactive?
I'm talking about paid firefighters, that's what you're twenty, twenty-four hour paid firefighters.
We need to have people that can sleep here to do a coverage shift, so this town has twenty-four hour coverage.
Right.
And those may be like reserved positions, but this needs to be functioned with a kitchen, a dining area, a sleeping area. So people will come here and not, not have a place to exist and, and in the other time.
We actually have other options, and we could leave this space, it would be more of a reactive approach, but I've been exploring temporary structures that are attractive, they look kinda log cavity, that can sit on the outside there, which is two sleepers, they don't look bad, and that would allow us to have the additional personnel that we can't currently find. But we are actively recruiting, or we will be actively recruiting and trying to fill the need, because we do need more people, either A, in town like it used to be, or B, we gotta start fishing out from other agencies.
Okay, so wait, 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 I wanna say this, I said it earlier, and maybe you didn't hear me, but I said remodel this room, tear it down, build it to, to what the standard has to be, and then later you can remodel it for living space, but the, the shell itself, you can use as a meeting room and turn it into a living space when that time comes. I, I really don't see that time right around the corner, I really don't.
Why?
I just, I don't see it, cause, because I've been here for twenty years, and now all of a sudden, it's, it's a priority.
John, I didn't, I cheated for seven years on when I started, I'd say, oh, we had enough people that were responding, we were here, but things are changing, our halls are going up, the requirements are going up, the need for people's going up, and what I'm saying, just cause we're not doing it doesn't mean we don't need it.
No, I know, when I, when I came on this fire department, it was five of us.
I know, there was less than that before you got here, um, but, but to remodel this, is you come up with a plan that you say twenty years from now, that's what I want it to look like, so you're not tearing it down, remodel, reuse, vanity here and there. With, the CSD moves out of here, then the fire department needs to be designed in all the needs that we want in our, this department, and build it.
Okay.
And there's, not to say there won't be a meeting room in here, but as we're talking about something like that, there would be a place.
I'd like to see a plan.
Okay.
While we're having this discussion, cause I really thought that we were having all of the discussion at once, I really believed that.
So we're all.
Then I have to.
That's why we called it functional spaces, we could talk about everything and not get it.
And there was expense to that, and so, do you want me to get three separate plans for this that cost money?
I, I mean, no, just a, just an idea, just pencil, yes, exactly.
We have, we have that. Obviously you have that.
The, the whole point.
It, it's not.
But for me, the whole point is this, I, I understand the, the aversion to traffic on many, a hundred percent, thousand percent. I live on River Road for God's sake, I don't know about traffic, okay? But the fact is that moving the, the offices and our conference room to this facility frees up this building to be strictly used for fire purposes, meaning that if we get to a point where we can't afford full-time staff for firefighters, we have a living space for them, a dining space, a kitchen, as Rob pointed out, and all of that can be built out of this building. If we keep one foot in this building and one foot in this building, we're kinda muddying the waters, and we're always gonna be screwed, no matter what.
I just wanna back up a little bit, just so you know, we built our budget for our coverage and for our pay for the fire department, we have the ability to have two days covered that Rob and I cannot fill, but we can't find people to do that on a continuous basis, so Rob and I fill those gaps, but we still have the funding for it. We put the mechanism in place to have a twenty-four hour person here two days a week.
You know.
But we can't fill the need.
It's not part of the facility conversation.
You can't find a person to do it.
What we're doing.
Wait, wait, wait.
We cannot fill the need, we can't, we, we, we have one person that lives in town, that does it when he can, and we can't pull somebody from another jurisdiction because we cannot house them. They can only be here for twelve hours a day, then what are they gonna do?
I see, but you have people that are willing to do it.
We don't. We have one person that's, that's qualified to do it, that lives in the district.
Right.
And we have other people that would be willing to do it, but we cannot facilitate them, but we have the funding mechanism in place to do so. So if we had, let's say, the temporary housing structure outside, we'd be able to put a body in that structure and say, you got it for two days, peace out, girl scout, you know, we need a, we need a, a mental moment, cause we're doing it the other five days a week.
The, the other part of it, Johnny, and the reason there wasn't a plan for this is because it's such a broad spectrum, and if this is something you're interested in, that frees up this space. If this is something you're not, and you wanna keep portion or all of the CSD in here, that changes the whole thing. Just in general, when.
Not most, not any of this.
I understand that, I completely understand that. And for a fire department though, if you're thinking about what we currently have, this has been used, this is dominated by CSD right now. And to have a functional fire department here, you're gonna have to have the amenities that allow it to develop, bring the people in, and, and create what we need it to be, and that's sleeping, cooking, training, uh, space. And that would redesign this whole thing, not just this room, but I didn't do.
No, you, you gotta do the whole thing.
Everything.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Now, I, I got a question, now, I've heard a lot of talk about, there's a huge upstairs to this building, isn't there?
Yes.
Can't that be utilized?
Well, currently there's no windows, if we add windows, it could be.
Well, can you make windows?
Well, I would believe so.
You need secondary access, you do need windows, you need the right access egress from it, and the way the building's designed, those components would have to be put in it, and that's talking about redesigning a lot of what's pre-existing.
It would be pretty expensive.
Yeah.
So when you look at the cost of doing that versus coming up with a plan, knowing what it's going to be with or without CSD, completely changes the whole dynamic.
Yeah, because I, I've seen a lot of fires, they think where the, the living quarters is upstairs, right?
Well, you have stairs here, you put a pole there, and you're good.
Yeah. You can put slide rail, pole, put a wire rope on, right?
Right, if you're able to encapsulate that stair and make that a secure, safe, fireproof stair that somebody could use as a fire escape, then you had a secondary egress, which could be an exterior stair, then out this door right here that goes after the fire separation, that's a perfect place for a pole, because you're not already crossed over the fire separation.
Yeah, there you go.
But all those other mechanisms have to be put in place, and then the fireworks have to be built and all that stuff.
So that would be.
Well, you're talking about, you're talking about gutting everything, and, and that kitchen was intended for, to be a kitchen with living fire space here, liv- living space here, that was, that is the kitchen.
That was Roland's version of kitchen.
Now Roland wasn't here yet.
I have a question for you, so if the board, um, accepted that proposal up there, would that free up the fire department to be able to do just a rough drawing, and no, no professional thing? Just a rough drawing of what their idea might be for here?
That's what, that's what I'm asking.
Because I don't think they can really do that unless they know what's gonna be there, and what are they gonna have to cover here.
Well, what I'm asking is, saying this is good, and the board agrees to that, draw a picture of what you would do here. Get your ruler and your pencil, and eraser.
That could be done, because we would free up all the space, all that storage space upstairs, all the office space here.
It'll all go there.
And, well, I'm saying here it would be freed up.
Yeah.
And then we would be creating the offices we need here, the storage space, and, and the stuff upstairs could be repurposed to other, other needs.
The linchpin is the train, is the conference room, because you're eliminating the, the public from the wastewater treatment plant, so now where's the public gonna go, so?
I don't know, I, you know.
So we're gonna accommodate the public here?
Here's, well, here's my concern, is, we have, what, fifteen meetings, sixteen meetings a year? And we get three or four people. And every, since I've been on this board for seven years, if we filled this room four times, probably. Okay? My concern is, is now, now if you do another two eighteen, and you do it at that building, you're gonna have people parking in front of people's houses. If they can.
Oh, no, I'm not talking with you about that.
No, I know you're talking, I'm just, that's my concern.
So maybe perhaps.
So if we could do it and still keep, Rob came up with an idea that I thought was wonderful, it was his idea, now all of a sudden it's not a good idea, but.
I'm not saying it wasn't, I'm saying the cost.
It was a great idea, I thought.
And it's more than, it costs more than that.
I think unfortunately, this, this building's a necessity because of the operation of the plant.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, so let's just say, our, we have another two eighteen, uh, to, to contend with.
Bite your tongue.
Let's, let's envision something else, okay, something more fine, it's a community meeting, everyone wants to participate. We're building a tiki bar in the new building, okay? So, we're gonna have this meeting where everyone's gonna attend. Well, if it's really that critical, why don't we rent out the parish hall for the meeting?
I was gonna suggest.
No, the cuspies are terrible.
Well.
But you have had meetings that have.
Plus, plus, here's the other thing with that, the school district used to do that, they used to have two meetings a year up at Heritage Ranch. And one, one or two times, there was hot topic items that got placed on the agenda when the meeting was scheduled out at Heritage Ranch. And if you don't think that everybody in this town didn't think that that was intentionally done to prevent them from going to the meeting, that's so.
Well, we had a good idea, that, you know, we've had other meetings, and the last two eighteen meetings we had, we had them on the engine bay. That is an option too, but.
Right.
Or we could have it in the community center, or in the school, or in the parish hall, or.
You could do it out in the engine bay, that'd be great, we could have all our meetings out there, it wouldn't bother me a bit. We could have every single one of them out there, and it wouldn't bother me a bit. You throw the heater on, you got the big heaters out there, right?
No?
There's a heater out, I don't think it works anymore, well, we'll get a heater put out there, and we'll have all our meetings out there. You know, I'm not trying to stop this, I just want, want us to have a plan for all of our functional space going in. That was what I thought this was about.
Well, and all, and with that part of that, with that meeting room, you know, when you looked at the size of it, because our training center's down there, we looked at all opportunities, okay, so if you're gonna build something that big, it can be repre, you know, used for other things just besides that, a lot of training, training classes.
You mean training people from out of district? Because you don't have enough people to fill that room, you, you could have it in the little one.
We, when, we wanna take a training class, we don't, if we send somebody, we pay four fifty, five, six hundred dollars to go take a class. If we bring them here, Scott brought a class to here, which ended up in Pasco, but he had to take the class, and the expense of going to it was not feasible, so we brought it here, everybody else came here and took it, well now, potentially we didn't charge, but people pay to take those classes.
It was a state farm marshal class, it was limited, what we could do.
But my point is, is that it can be used for anything, and when it comes to group.
Rent it out for parties?
Well, no, but business, business.
Weddings, that's what I thought, it's got a water feature, I said that last time. It's already got one. That's party gallo.
Oh, geez, um, why aren't the CSD meetings at the community center?
Why's what?
Why aren't the CSD meetings at the community center, isn't it bigger?
You can't hear, and you can't understand what a person's talking.
Yeah, and there's a charge.
And, and they, yeah, they charge you for it, but you can't, honest to God, you can't understand a word a person's saying up there.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they, they have the worst acoustic.
Core towns acoustics are everywhere.
It could be fixed easily, but they don't know what he wants to put the money in there.
Right.
But you can put some, some styrofoam panels up, and some curtains on the windows, and throw a couple of padded chairs and couches in there, and.
Like fire system.
A rug, and you have it down.
Yeah. You know, that, that is something, though, we really don't need, this community has so many meeting spaces, half of them are dysfunctional, and we have no centralized place for anyone to go, if there's, there's supposed to be a town event.
You could have meetings at the senior center if you wanted to.
But that's a problem, though, you know, you, you, where, where can we supposed to go when this county first wants to have a community meeting? Where's the first place someone would think to go?
Elkhorn.
And we're.
But we should have the county build one at the park, you know?
Well, the county's talked about that for years.
School auditorium, that's in their plan.
I know.
But we'll see.
But I mean.
The back from the Elkhorn's pretty big, right?
Yeah. But the fact, the fact that if you wanna use that, and then you have to go through the Lions Club to do it, it's never made sense to me.
Cause the Lions.
It's never made sense.
Well, the, the whole problem is, whether the county owns it, or the Lions takes care of it, it's, they're still charged. There's a charge everywhere you go to the, a meeting room.
We don't wanna do that.
What about the school auditorium?
They charge you.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm sure, and I'm sure they, you know, I, I would, the acoustics in there wouldn't be good either.
So, so for.
The town with no.
So maybe we need a plan for a central meeting place for the community.
We've got the bleachers.
Yeah.
So, so for argument's sake, are the three of you okay with the, that proposal if large meetings aren't held there, and we don't take payments?
Reduce the traffic as much as possible. I still think that the, I still think that the meeting space is over the top.
Well, it can be adjusted.
And I, and I think, I don't see a need for, for two bathrooms.
Oh, proactive.
Let me ask you something, how many lockers are you gonna have in the men's locker room?
It shows like eight.
And how many in the ladies?
Well, they're just, you know, so, it's just a spatial thing, you don't have to have eight, but you have to have a certain amount of space for a handbag or something.
But you buy the lockers in the four locker block, and you put a floor in there, and.
And that'd probably be fine for the next ten or fifteen years, and twenty, or we might have, we might have a fifth.
But like Scott pointed out, that has to be ADA accessible with a turnaround inside.
Oh, you said, sorry.
I've been listening to him.
In, turn around, I swear.
Look, do this. So your bathrooms have to have ADA turnarounds, your locker rooms have to have ADA turnarounds, our hallways have to have, they have to be wide enough for ADA.
Right, no, I get, I, I understand all of that.